...was for allowing a one-time bow and arrow hunt, blah, 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 in areas that are proscribed by Arkansas Game &amp; Fish. Now, when we look at Webster's or Merriam-Webster, we look free dictionary, we look just about anywhere, and the definition of proscribed is prohibited. And by Mr. Corey's words, deer hunting is not prohibited within the city limits by Arkansas Game &amp; Fish. A ballot issue says very clearly, "In areas proscribed, prohibited by Arkansas Game &amp; Fish." So, if we're going to go by the ballot issue and what the people voted for, they voted for a hunt in areas, urban areas, that are prohibited by Arkansas Game &amp; Fish, and that does not exist. There are no areas in this city that are prohibited by Arkansas Game &amp; Fish. The deer specialist just told us that. So, that's one item. If we do this, if we go through with the hunt, we're not following what the ballot issue says, because, again, the ballot issue says, "In areas prohibited by Arkansas Game &amp; Fish, there are no areas in city limits that are prohibited by Arkansas Game &amp; Fish." Just a few thoughts I've had. One thing is, we have a deer feeding ban in place right now, and I've heard a lot of people say, "It's a horrible thing. The deer are eating all their expensive plants." And we're not ticketing those people for feeding the deer. They're putting out all these expensive plants that the deer consider gourmet treats, and the deer are eating them, and we're not ticketing those people for feeding the deer. So, that's kind of odd to me. Another thing is, HDC's rules, if I understand correctly, don't really allow people to build fences that are sufficient to keep deer out of their yards and out of their gardens. So, that seems like another reason why we're having this problem, is because people aren't allowed to protect their property so the deer don't come on their property. And so, it's a problem for the people, and that's a problem we've created by not allowing people to fence their yards sufficiently to keep the deer out of their yards and keep the deer from eating their expensive plant, that they're feeding the deer and not getting tickets for violating the deer feeding ban. So, all those are issues I've been thinking a lot about and turning over my head and trying to figure out where to go with all this and what's the right thing to do. Also, we know that until 1996, people were allowed to hunt deer in town, and that probably kept the population down somewhat. Also, when we passed the leash laws, it used to be dogs ran loose in this town, and they would, you know, run the deer off, they'd run the deer off your property, and probably run deer off of other people's properties, too. So, there's just really a whole lot of things to think about and consider and take under consideration. So, this is really a tough one, folks, and, like I said, the main thing is, to me, the wording of the ballot issue, it says, "In areas prohibited by Arkansas Game &amp; Fish," and in this city, there are no areas prohibited by Game &amp; Fish. So, that really lets us off the hook right there.
Let me speak to that.
I have the floor, thank you.
I thought you were done. The mayor acknowledged me.
I believe I have the floor, thank you.
Address me, not him.
I believe I have the floor, sir.
Are you finished?
I believe I have the floor, sir.
I'm asking, are you finished?
No, I'm not.
Okay, proceed then.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
I'm finished.
Just so the Game &amp; Fish guys won't be confused, we do have a couple of lawyers here in the room, and the word proscribed, if you go to the legal definition of proscribed, it's actually as written by Game &amp; Fish.
That's not true.
Well, I've consulted a legal dictionary, and trust me-
I did, too.
He's got the floor, you go ahead.
We're going to play by those rules, you gotta do it. Anyway, guys, proscribed means as written by Game &amp; Fish, so don't get confused with different interpretations of the words if you go to a legal dictionary. The people in the community understood that as dictated by Game &amp; Fish, in essence, is how the word is, and they voted in that manner to approve the hunt. So, we can quibble over different definitions. Some words will have eight or nine different definitions, but the ballot was written by a lawyer. He used the legal terms, proscribed being, in essence, to be written by the Game &amp; Fish.
Mr. Pannell, you had your hand up first.
Speaker Corey, but I don't have a legal dictionary in my office.
Well, now that we're on this, what does proscribed mean? We've got two lawyers here, two lawyers, so do either of you know what proscribed means? According to a legal dictionary?
If you want to tackle it, man, it's not part of your-
I don't.
It's not the reason you're here.
I don't choose you. Are you addressing it, or I don't want to?
Well, I don't know. Mr. DeVito said we had two lawyers here, and you're the only two lawyers I see in the room, so-
What are the procedure? Yes, sir, go ahead.
I think we're here to ask them questions, not to get legal decisions.
Yes, sir, we are. Mr. Pannell, you had your hand up.
One last question that I have from the Game &amp; Fish people. Regardless of how this goes, how many days, how many hunters, how many dogs get shot, how many people don't get shot, whatever, is this the last time that we're going to be seeing Game &amp; Fish involved in this deer hunt in Eureka Springs? Because I've been told that Game &amp; Fish has basically washed their hands of this, and once you all turn it over to the deer committee to handle this deer camp. So, any of the rules that apply, there will be no reports coming back to Game &amp; Fish? Any involvement whatsoever?
Our role is provide assistance. We can't make a decision on the behalf of the city. We can provide assistance, technical assistance and guidance. The route that was chosen with the DMAP program, we currently have a signed application. If that is a decision of the council, then we will provide tags. We will provide the doe tags, and we also provide check sheets and things like that. There will be a responsibility there to check those animals in and record those animals with our tags.
Does that mean that you'll have someone sitting in City Hall issuing those tags out where our procedures say that they'll be issued out of City Hall?
No, sir. You guys actually issue those tags to the hunter themselves, and then it's the responsibility of the hunter to, number one, check them in over our website or over their iPhone or whatever, and then they also record that information on their data ledger. And then, at the end of the season, you guys turn that data ledger into the Game &amp; Fish so we can enter that data, that harvest number.
Okay, so, does that mean that there's not going to be someone from Game &amp; Fish here for whatever length of time the deer hunt is?
Correct.
So, if there's a deer that gets wounded and goes into somebody else's yard, if somebody calls Game &amp; Fish about it, how long is it going to take somebody to get here to take care of it?
Well, there's usually two officers in each county. It depends on whether or not they're both on duty. We would suggest that you probably contact your local PD first. They'll probably be the easiest and the quickest to respond. If someone's not available to them, then contact one of our Game &amp; Fish officers.
Yeah, it just doesn't seem to be their area of expertise to deal with wounded deer, because I know that wounded deer can be very, very dangerous, that their hooves are very sharp, and when an animal is hurt, their adrenaline level really goes up.
Well, the police are not actually dealing with the animal, they're dealing with people. The hunter themselves are the ones that are to deal with the animal that's been shot.
Oh, so they come, and then they can bring the hunter onto the property, even if the property owner, like next door, doesn't want the hunter there?
You still have to have permission. The landlord can deny permission to the officer as well.
Okay.
We're just doing that as a step of courtesy.
All right, so if the deer should go over, this person wants hunt, this person doesn't want hunt, this person isn't home, the deer is over here, what happens then?
That's it. Ma'am, we hope that you could be able to talk with the police officer and work it out.
Well, I'm saying, you know, because people have said to me, what do we have to be home, you know, from dawn till dusk for the entire hunt? To be sure that if an injured animal comes on their property, that the animal can be taken care of, you know? And I was told about Game &amp; Fish and the police, I never really thought to ask whether they would be able to come onto the property if the owner wasn't there.
Like I said, we don't have a right retrieval law. We cannot come on your property.
Okay, so nobody can come onto the property?
That's right. But, you know, we would hope that the 15 hunters that's chosen, they will have to have written permission in their pocket on whatever piece of property they're hunting. It would be wise if they would go to the neighbor's property and receive written permission to come on their property, just in the case an animal goes there. And go ahead and have their homework taken care of and all their preparation taken care of. It may be wise to go two or three landowners over, just in case, and go ahead and make that contact, go ahead and visit with those neighbors, and get your written permission in your pocket, so just in case that does happen, then he'll be covered.
Okay.
Anybody else? Speak now, Ms. Pannell.
I'd like to read into the record a letter we've received from Andrea J. Radwell, Ph.D. She's with Biological Sciences, University of Arkansas. July 27, 2012, to Mayor Pate and the members of Eureka Springs City Council. I am writing to express my concerns about the proposed deer hunt scheduled for later this year. From the outset, let me say that I am not opposed to deer hunting. I am well aware of the problem of deer overpopulation throughout North America that has resulted from the elimination of natural predators. But I am strongly opposed to an urban hunt in Eureka Springs for a number of reasons. First, the effectiveness of urban hunting in controlling deer populations has received mixed reviews. It is particularly questionable in an area such as Eureka Springs that cannot reasonably be called an urban area. We are surrounded by woods and have pockets of habitat throughout the city. There are large populations of deer throughout the region, and the effort to reduce the number within the city limits is likely to be fruitless. While the population will drop from an aggressive hunting season, the void will soon be filled by more animals moving in from the surrounding area. Any honest bow hunter will admit that all of the deer that are shot will not die immediately. Some will be injured and flee, requiring the hunter to track them down. This opens the possibility that tourists will see injured animals as they travel around the town, and it is particularly problematic to those who do not want hunters on their property. If they do not agree to allow access, they may be faced with the problem of having to remove an injured animal that flees onto their property. I can certainly envision this happening in my own neighborhood off Anderson Street, a prime area for deer. An injured animal could easily flee up the hill to White Street. Do we really want a wedding party on the way to Crescent Hotel to see a deer with an arrow in its side running down the street? If the animal does not flee toward White Street, there is always my property. I do not want hunters on my property, and I have neither a shotgun nor a bow and arrow to deal with an injured animal. I am among those who would very much like to see the deer problem addressed, but I believe that I am well enough informed to know that the proposed deer hunt is likely to do little to remedy the problem. If there were easy solutions, it would not continue to be a problem in just about every part of North America. Do the citizens of Eureka Springs, living in a tourist town smack in the middle of excellent deer habitat, really think they can control the deer population through bow hunting? Just how much hunting would actually be necessary to succeed? And are the potential problems associated with hunting within the city limits really worth it? I personally think that those who voted for a deer hunt did so out of frustration, without a full understanding of the ramifications of hunting within the city limits. As a biologist, I believe that the deer problem will ultimately take care of itself through disease and environmental stress. We are likely to see a much smaller population next year as a result of the drought. But the problem of deer overpopulation is not likely to be remedied by natural means in the immediate future, so in the meantime, we will have to do the best we can to live with the problem. I am all for seeking solutions, but I do not think an urban bow hunt is among the rational options. Andrea J. Radwell, Ph.D. And furthermore, obviously, I can read, and I have also looked in legal dictionaries, and indeed, the word proscribed came from scribe, which is writing, and pro, which is pre, so pre-writing. All the legal dictionaries that I consulted, and all the other dictionaries that I consulted, indeed, say, since 1856, the references went back to 1856, and in every single instance, proscribed meant the same thing as prohibit or forbid. Thank you.
Anybody else? Gentlemen, any closing comments? Any comments?
No, again, I mean, whichever decision is made, please know we'll be there to assist, whatever means, but, you know, there's pros and cons to each trail that you decide on, and I, you know, the trail that was decided with the DMAP program does allow for restricted use. You have the 15 hunters. But again, it's going to be the decision of this body, and we appreciate the opportunity to come and speak, and we hope that we've assisted. I don't know if we have or not, but I hope we have.
I just wanted to thank you for coming, and I wanted to thank you for answering all my questions. When I've called you, you've made a very extra effort to get hold of me immediately, and I really have appreciated that. Thank you.
Anybody else? We're going to turn them loose.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you coming out. You, too, sir. Matt, take care. Safe trip on. Okay, anything else on this one? Mr. Pannell.
I've never been for the deer hunt. I don't necessarily have a vote in this. I have a vote for the people. I'd have to say that the written communications and the oral communications that I've received has probably been 50/50, for and against. Also, there's been the discussion of whether or not it's what the people voted for. That's also been included in the for and the against. I would like to thank the Deer Hunt Committee for their efforts, and with that, I make a motion that we strike out of the hunt dates, the September 15 through October 9th, October 7th dates, for any future discussion, and go with at least the second date as possible period of time for deer hunt.
Ms. Pannell.
Do we have a second?
That was your motion, Mr. Pannell. Okay, is there a second? We want to have a discussion.
I would second it, but I'm not sure exactly what the motion was.
To strike the first date, the first set of dates, and go with the running date as they recommend, the November 10 through the 28.
November 10 to what?
The date that's in the guidelines that they've been given, November 10, 2012, through February 28, 2013. As the possible dates for hunting.
And who's made the second?
Wait, that was a question I wanted to know about the second. The motion was possible dates. If that's an affirmative date-
It could be refined with other-
If it's definite, I'll go ahead and second it. I mean, otherwise, it's talking-
Of those two dates, the first one needs to be struck, is my motion.
Okay, I'll go with that, and you keep the second date for the hunt.
Yeah, that's a solid second.
I'll second that.
All right, now the discussion is balanced.
If we were to decide that we were going to have a deer hunt, the first suggestion I made when this all came up was 15 minutes on Christmas morning. So, I'm going to start from there. That's going to be my suggestion, to do it for 15 minutes on Christmas morning. Well, we're talking about it, Mr. Berry, and I have the floor. Thank you, sir. When we're thinking about that, we need to consider that in November, we have Thanksgiving. In December, we have Christmas and New Year. We have, in February, we have Valentine's Day, and those are all pretty good tourist draws to this town. We have parades, we have people doing things, milling around, going shopping, looking around. So, I would be concerned about having a deer hunt in this town when we have a lot of visitors here. I think maybe a good compromise to that might be the first full week in January. I would even go so far as to say the first full two weeks in January, perhaps. I might be willing to consider if indeed we're going to go ahead with this. The deer hunting, it's going to be like shooting fish in a barrel, pretty much. It should be fairly easy for the hunters to bag as many deer as they can in a week or two weeks. So, I would think that a week or two weeks would be plenty, and I really would not like to have it during any of the holidays when tourists are bound to be here. That's all for now, thank you.
Mr. Pannell.
Thank you for interjecting that. That was part of my purpose for possibly throwing out dates within that time period, because, as they said, you know, we could have them hunting on odd days or whatever, and I think what I would like to see, if we vote on this November 10 through the 28th of February date, going back to the deer committee, which we should have to do since we're deleting one of their proposed dates, and having them come up with another proposal within those, if we pass it, within those dates that meet the concerns of whether it's a holiday, Thanksgiving weekend, Christmas, whatever the case might be, and see what they can work between the November 10, February 28 dates.
Mr. Berry.
Well, I don't see any reason for it, going back to the deer committee. We did that last year, and this is where we are. And also, you know, I guess people have read maybe the Arkansas Democrat Gazette, but Branson, Missouri is going to do a deer hunt. We're talking about tourist town. Branson is about 10 times more tourists than Eureka does, and they're going to have an urban hunt. Also, for your information, Washington, DC, Arlington, Fairfax, the surrounding areas of Washington, DC have urban deer hunts. Very populated area. Branson's a populated area. So, it doesn't matter, if you're going to be against a deer hunt, let's not say 15 minutes on Christmas, let's just say you're not for it, and that's fine. Be upfront for it, don't abstain from the vote. You know, if we want to have a deer hunt, let's have the deer hunt. That's what the deer committee worked, we tried to do this. Mr. Pannell said he got 50/50, you know, people for and against. You know, I got some against, I got some for. You know, the people voted to have the deer hunt, so let's either do it or make the decision you're not going to do it. You know, I'm willing to go, and I think I can speak for the deer hunt committee, I don't know, that, you know, if we have it, let's go ahead and do the second half. It's up to this commission or this council to do it. So, let's go ahead and make a decision. If you want to go ahead and have the proficiency exam, have them required be in the IBE, let's make them be an IBE member, and take care of the insurance, IBE, International Bow. And let's go ahead and do that as part of the requirements, and then we don't have to worry about it. Let's just do it and get this over with. Otherwise, we're going to be right back where we were last year. The hunters need to know so they can schedule when they're going to come in to hunt. The Game &amp; Fish, the experts, said the best time to do it is September, because then they can go ahead to their regular other deer places, their deer camps. This is not a deer camp, this is a deer management organization, and that's what we're doing. So, let's either do it or not. If we don't want to do it, you know, that's up to you guys. This is a committee that the deer committee recommended based on the vote of the people.
Well, for one, this is a deer camp, because that's the program that the deer committee chose, unless Earl Hyatt said the wrong thing to the Arkansas Democrat Gazette, because that's exactly what he said. And I have had actually a few more people against it. I have had people from Bed and Breakfast call me and say, in fact, I talked to a man in my business recently, who is a hunter from Oklahoma, but said when he comes over to Eureka Springs and stays at a Bed and Breakfast, he does not want to see a deer running by the window with an arrow in it. And I've had a business here for 35 and a half years, and we have people that come to Eureka Springs all the way through New Years. And, you know, that's, our season is not just summertime, it's all the way through Christmas time. And I had a person who owns a B&amp;B call me this morning and say that she's already, because of the press talking about it being a deer hunt here, that she's already having her customers call up and be concerned about being here and seeing deer that are injured and, you know, all of this. So, it is affecting the way that people think about Eureka, because Eureka, they don't expect to come here and to be coming to a deer camp. So, I don't know, but I certainly would not want to see this hunt be before, definitely before New Years, because we still have people coming here, and in fact, that week between Christmas and New Years is a busy week, because people stay over. They come for Christmas, and then they stay over through New Years. And, you know, I didn't even solicit a thing from this guy that came in from Oklahoma. He'd already read it in the paper, and he said, frankly, that's not what I want to see them come here. And she said she's gotten a lot of feedback, and I talked to several other B&amp;B owners that are really concerned about it. So, I would say that we, you know, cut it down even further. And I have had a lot of people say that never in a million years, when they, people that even voted for it, like Melissa Green, never in a million years did they think it was going to be that long. And, you know, it does say one time, but it seems to me that most of the people that have called me about it said they never expected it to happen five months ago. So, I think that, I mean, it only won by 76 votes, which is 9%, and so, I think that it wasn't exactly a landslide mandate that we have this hunt in town, and it would be interesting to have the vote again, because I think it would lose the next time, because too many people have told me they voted for it, and they would never vote for it.
Ms. DeVito, you had your hand up.
Well, you know, if I get elected to office by one vote, I'm still elected to office, and that's still the voice of the people reflected in a vote. And in my opinion, that is more indicative of what the people in the community want than the people that take the time to either email me or call me. I've always said that the only real way to understand what the public wants in the community is by a vote of the people. The people have voted, they want to hunt. I'll go along with Mr. Pannell's motion, but I would like to amend it to include a proficiency exam for the hunters.
Point of clarification, my motion was strictly to cut out one of the two dates. The rest of it can still be discussed, just for sake of clarification. Call for the question.
Can I get a chance for a second on my amendment?
No. Go ahead. Mr. Lee, you had your hand up.
Oh, he's called the question.
He's called the question.
Okay, all right. Ms. Pannell, go ahead.
We have to vote on that.
Right.
He didn't get a second.
All in favor of-
He didn't get a second. I would move to amend the motion to have the hunt be-
Did he get a second?
I would amend the motion to have the hunt be from January 7 through January 21st.
I believe Mr. Berry did second Mr. Pannell's motion.
Did he second it?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
But I didn't get a chance to address that issue. Okay, so, for clarification, would you please read the motion as you understand it, Ms. Clerk, and then we have a second, we'll vote on it, and we'll act accordingly.
Mr. Pannell's motion was to eliminate the first portion of the hunt and proceed with November 10 through February 28.
Okay, and Mr. Berry amended that motion?
No, that's it, and then- And then can call the ques, I mean, Mr. Pennell call the question and...
All right. Everybody understand the motion?
Which motion are we voting on?
To have the...
Mr. Pennell's motion.
No, we have to vote on calling the question first, I believe.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Better ask them individually.
I got it.
Okay. 4-2. Okay. The motion does carry to go to the question. So now the question is on the motion itself. All in favor of Mr. Pennell's motion?
I'd like to do that by roll call.
Go ahead.
I want to borrow your little book there too, please.
This one?
Yes, please. So on having the hunt from November 10th to February 28th. Ms. Balance?
No.
Mr. Pennell?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Ms. Lindblad?
No.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Four yeses, two noes.
Okay. So it's changed to that date?
Correct.
Mr. Pennell, sorry.
I move that this table further improve upon the committee recommendations for any requested changes to the procedures. I was just saying, I'm sorry.
Would you repeat it, sir?
I withdraw my attempt.
Okay. Anything else on this one? We've changed it to the date. What are you looking up? Calling a question.
Just, it's okay, go ahead, please.
Point of information, then?
Yes, sir.
I guess what I'm looking for is with the date changes, are the rules that have been put out by the Deer Committee that are published and given to the hunters still in concrete?
Except for the dates, apparently, yes. That does not include the proficiency part of this because under the deer hunt, it doesn't call for it.
That's what I was looking for.
That can be added by the council if the council so desires.
How about if we just make them be a member of the International Bow Hunters Association and they have to already pass the proficiency? Yeah, I'll make a motion that they should be a member of the IBE, International Bow Hunters Association.
IBE, not the ABA.
International Bow Hunters, I believe that's what it's on the...
ABA?
Double check here.
The urban hunt says ABA.
Is it ABA? Okay.
That's ABA.
Okay. So you amend in your motion to include ABA and Stricken Abbey E or whatever it was?
Yeah, because if they're ABA, they have to still pass the IB, International Bow Hunters Education Course.
Okay. Made in second, any further discussion on that? You want to roll call it? No, go ahead.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Pennell?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
All abstain.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Lindblad?
Abstain.
Four yeses, two abstentions.
Okay. Mr. Pennell?
Move for a 10-minute break.
Absolutely.
Second.
You're second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Second.
We'll be back in session from recess. My understanding is number one is postponed, under and finished. Number two is postponed. Number three is off the agenda. Leaves us for number four, non-participating commissioners.
Motion to discuss.
Second?
Second.
Made in second, floor is open.
Kind of, I don't want to say got out of hand, but I guess what I'd like to do is I'd like to make a motion, I propose to make a motion that each commission respond back to council their position on non-participating commissioners no later than 30 September.
Made in second, if the 30th is on...
September 3.
That's all.
Did you say September 3?
30th.
30th.
30th, the 3rd.
30th. Last meeting.
30th is... You're second?
Yes.
Any further discussion on it?
Yes, sir. As a clarification, there are some commissions that have in the rules and regulations, actions that they will take. What I'm looking for is those that do have them to present those to council, the others that maybe they either don't care or have a proposal that they'd like to see put into ordinance format. But I think we need to hold commissioners accountable once they've been put on those commissions.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. All right. Understand number five and number six are postponed? Are correct? Okay. Leaves number seven open, Vine Street Vacation Ordinance. We will have some folks here to talk about that.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Made in second, floor is open. You all want to discuss before you bring the attorneys to the mic? Apparently not. Who do you want up first? Mr. Kendrick? Yes, sir.
Well, it's my understanding that everybody's come to agreement on this, the property owners. So I think probably the best thing would be to hear from the attorneys to see if that's true.
Okay, that's what I was asking. Who do you want up first? You're over here.
Ladies first.
He has five to get around, so go ahead.
That is correct. Everyone has agreed, all of the neighbors. That's the Hills, the Mr. Kettleson who owns the restaurant now, the Levine's and the Holmes, I'm sorry. Excuse me, the Holmes. My name is Kristy Kendrick, by the way, and I represent Brad Hill. I wanted to address one thing and that was an email that Mr. Berry sent out to all of the aldered persons that mentions that perhaps one solution might be an easement. And I think that Mr. Bishop would agree with me that the city does not have that power. Right now, lawyers are taught in law school that real estate is like a bundle of sticks. And the stick that the city has in that bundle is an easement for street purposes only. From that stick, it cannot grant an easement to put a house on top of that property. Really, the adjoining landowners have all the other sticks in that bundle other than that one stick that the city has. So it does not have the power to grant an easement for the footprint of the building. All it can do is return the stick that it has to the adjoining landowners by vacation. And I also want to point out that part of these ordinances is accepting an easement for a pedestrian walkway or trail across private property, not just Vine Street. Vine Street as a practical matter is not a good trail because it's a series of bluffs. But there is a way that you can go on to the Kettlesons and I believe the Holmes and the Levine's property that is just a really nice natural trail and it hooks up with a staircase that comes up off the parking lot that is in the parking lot for the restaurant. So the city is not just giving up that one stick, it's getting a different stick, which is the pedestrian walkway.
Question? Ms. Balance?
I've received a concern from Mr. Holmes, who is one of the property owners. And it turns out that he has three or four or five lots right there and there is a structure on the lot that fronts Main Street. However, there is no access to the remaining properties from Main Street. So his concern was that if he ever decided to split up those lots and sell them separately, if we, if we go through with any of this, that will effectively land lock his property and he would not be able to sell those lots and have people that bought them have access to those properties. So if we go through with this and he decides to sell those properties, then at some point somebody would have to go all through this and undo it. So that is his concern and he asked me to bring it forward and so I have. So in other words, if we vacate this property, he will be left with three or four lots that he would not be able to do anything with because there would be no access to those properties. That easement would no longer exist. So that's his concern. And of course, the function of city government is to help individuals when such help will not adversely affect the general population. But we need to carefully consider everything we do. We need to carefully consider everybody, the whole town, the future of the town, the future of the people who own those lots, the future of the people who may one day own those lots, who may want to do something different than with them and sell them separately, so forth. So that's just something I'd ask you all to consider.
You're first. I'm sorry, go ahead.
May I address that? We met with Mr. Holmes and reached an agreement with him and part of our deal or the easement is we're going to grant Mr. Holmes an easement along Vine Street for access to his lots for ingress and egress and for utilities. He, yeah, it really is better, better access.
I just got this message within the last week or so, so perhaps, perhaps it's something he's just become concerned with?
Well, we have addressed that concern.
Within the last week or so?
Well, we, I'd have to ask my client, we have tried to get in contact with him in the last week, but we do, we're granting an easement for access to those lots, so he should not be adversely affected at all by this.
Thank you.
Is there any else? If not, Mr. Pennell?
The easement thing is a, out of, it's a nice enough for us making this decision. My only concern in reading this proposed ordinance and I was trying to go back to my planning days and I pulled out an old ordinance way back in May of 2010 and I don't know for certain if donation of other properties considered the same as a settlement based on price because in this one, for a sum of $800, fee simple was given and the two whereas, and maybe I'm getting ahead of myself before we read the ordinance, but the second and third whereas says that the city is determined to sell the said property and apply the proceeds for corporate purposes. And then the third one says, I'm sorry, it's the first one. The first one and the second one, it says, is not at the, for the time being required for corporate purposes and such land shall have been donated. And then it turns around and says that has been determined to sell said portion of Vine Street and apply the proceeds for corporate purposes. A little confusing as far as what we're really doing.
May I address that? In, I passed out a map, I believe, last time. I don't know if everyone got a copy of that, but the city owns some of the streets in Eureka Springs and not others. And Vine Street is not one that the city owns. There were several patents or deeds from the United States government that was given to the city back when the city was first formed. And Vine Street is not in one of those areas. So it was actually given to a private individual by the United States government. And so the areas where the city was actually given the patents, the city owns the streets fee simple or absolutely. But in areas where the city, other people were given the patent by the United States government, the city does not own the streets fee simple. It only has an easement for the purposes, for street purposes only. So there is, if they own the streets, they get compensation. If they don't own the streets, they don't.
But I thought you just said when you were talking about the sticks that we couldn't give easement. So if the city only has easement over that street, then how can we do anything since we can't give easement?
You're vacating it. You're vacating, getting rid of the easement for street purposes so the adjoining landowners now will own the whole bundle.
We're vacating the easement, we're not vacating the street.
Correct.
Anybody else?
So the donation of the trail is considered the selling price for vacating?
You're not owed a sales price because you, there's, you don't own the streets. There are decisions on that point, that you only get the consideration if you actually owned the whole street, all the rights involved in the street.
But it says right here, whereas, as Mr. Pennell pointed out, the city council has determined to sell said portion of Vine Street to the adjoining property owners. And if the city doesn't own the street, how can the city sell the street to the Vine Street owners?
I perhaps used the wrong word.
Because it's, and then it goes on to say and apply the proceeds for corporate purposes, which we don't know what that is. And then the city council is determined to accept in consideration of said sale, the donation of a trail. And how do we even know if we're selling, what's the selling price and what's the donation going to be?
I might have to reword the whereases. I drafted this prior to learning that the city does not own that street. I drafted this prior to learning that the city does not own that street.
Okay, well, then I don't see how we can do this ordinance if it's not worded correctly.
I believe we could probably amend it.
Yes, sir.
Before she gives up the mic, she just made a comment that this whole thing bothers me, is if we don't own the street, what part are we involved in this, then? If Vine Street is not owned by the city, and I realize from a real estate standpoint, we have no involvement in easements, that's between the buyer and the seller, as far as granting easements or not granting. We can't grant an easement at this table. But you said that if the city does not own Vine Street, then how can we legally vacate it, if it's private property?
Because you had, what you're vacating is the easement for street purposes.
You're going to have to bend her.
I'm fine, I'm fine.
Okay. Go ahead.
Can I give you an example of that?
Sure.
You own some land, you have to cross your neighbor's property, because you have, and you use an easement to cross your neighbor's property. Later on, you want to use another route that doesn't cross that property. You can, you own that easement across your neighbor's property, but you can vacate it, because now you have a better route. You are giving up that easement. So the city has an easement over this property owned by the adjoining landowners. What a vacation does is simply say, we're done with that, we are giving it up. And as Ms. Kendrick said, you don't have the right, under Arkansas law, and this is not our invention, it's the Arkansas Supreme Court's, you don't have the right to sell an easement unless you own the underlying property outright, and you don't in this case.
I understand that, the reading, the reading, the ordinance, we're vacating something we don't own. Basically, what you're saying is we're vacating the easement.
Correct. And I think you could easily strike the selling, which in proceed as is.
Ms. Lynn Bled?
As I read along here, after, it says, the city of Eureka Springs agrees to accept from the owners of the vacated Vine Street from Bruce and Patty Levine, Steve and Denver Holmes, a pedestrian easement over the following property, but then below that, it says, a non-exclusive easement for pedestrian property. So what does it mean, a non-exclusive easement?
Non-exclusive means that other people can also have easements in the same property, as long as they're consistent.
Consistent with what?
With the, with the use as pedestrian easement. So for example, we could also have an easement in favor of Mr. Holmes, for example, so that he can more easily get to his property for maintenance purposes. That would not be inconsistent with the pedestrian easement.
So in other words, you could have almost any kind of easement there?
As long as it's not inconsistent with the use as a pedestrian easement.
So somebody could put like a road in there if they wanted to, that would be an easement?
That is true.
As long as pedestrians could walk up and down it?
And in fact, it isn't going to be an exclusive easement, because, as I said, we're offering the Holmes access, ingress and egress, if they want to develop it, to sell some of their property.
Yes, yes, yeah, Bruce. I'm sorry, I see you sitting in the corner.
I'm Bruce Levine, I'm one of the owners on Vine Street, and the only thing I want to say is that this is one of these rare opportunities in Eureka Springs, that four landowners have come together and reached a compromise. We had a bad situation where there was an encroachment on, onto this street, Vine Street, and the four of us have worked for months to work out something that was agreeable to everybody, the city included. Parks wanted to have a pedestrian easement for a trail, they got it. The city has an easement for any future utilities that may or may not be necessary, they've got it. Each owner, respectively, has gotten an easement amongst themselves that will run with the property, that will allow them to continue on with their, their business. So this was something that was put together by all the landowners and agreed upon by all the landowners, and I think that's been compelling, especially in Arlington. Thank you.
Now I don't have a question. Well, being as Ms. Balance received something from one of the owners within the last week, and you all haven't talked to that owner within the last week, I don't feel, I do not feel at ease about going ahead with this until we hear from that person and know that he has, his concerns have been addressed.
We had a meeting yesterday evening with Holmes, Brad, who's outside, and we all came to the agreement that this is what we want to do. I'm not too sure what the message was that Ms. Balance got, but we were in person, face to face, all, all of us talking.
Who's Brad?
Brad is the owner.
Brad Dell.
His client. So we can ask him to come in to witness that conversation. And also Ken Kettleson, who was the owner of that building, was also there by phone, because he wasn't able to be there in person. Parks and Planning has both recommended this.
Mr. Berry?
I get a question for one of the attorneys. The access for Holmes, is that a pedestrian access?
No, that's vehicular.
So does this need to be changed from a pedestrian easement?
Well, this is, actually, the agreement that we have with Mr. Holmes does not involve the city. So we have signed a separate agreement, Mr. Holmes has not signed it yet, but he did agree to sign it, whereby all of the parties have actually granted him that kind of access.
So we don't need to be concerned with that?
Well, I don't think, you wouldn't put it in an ordinance, because it's an agreement between the landowners, they're not, they don't have the power to really give it until you have vacated, and they have reached that agreement in anticipation of you vacating.
Does he want to say something? I mean, anybody else has spoken so far?
This is Mr. Hill.
Would you care to say something, sir?
My name's Brad Hill, and I guess the only thing I want to say is I can confirm that all of the parties involved agreed yesterday afternoon on Bruce's porch, so that's it.
Ms. Lynn Bled?
All right, so this agreement that you say that you have with Mr. Holmes, but he hasn't signed yet, is, came about yesterday afternoon?
Actually, it's come about over the course of about three months, and we've met Mr. Holmes in person, and his request has been consistent, and it was met, this agreement. In fact, my client, we were the last ones to really get on board, and we are on board, and I think we're probably the ones most affected by it.
So he wasn't at the meeting yesterday afternoon, and you did not come to this agreement yesterday afternoon?
You've got two responses, that he was there, and they did come to an agreement, these gentlemen were there.
We, I met with him at least two months ago, and went over all of his concerns and addressed it in this agreement, and I believe they had the same meeting yesterday. I was not present.
Well, was, so a group of people met with Mr. Holmes yesterday afternoon and came to the agreement that you're saying that he hasn't signed yet?
Well, it was agreed upon two months ago, as far as I know.
Right, and I understand that, but then you got ahold of Ms. Balance a week ago, so that makes me wonder whether he's still in agreement with this, or what's going on, since he hasn't met with you. That's Mr. Holmes?
No, it's Mr. Kettleson.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Pennell?
I mean, that's my only concern, that we don't have any proof, since he called her, that he's in agreement with this thing.
Actually, I think you do have some proof, because these two gentlemen sent them in yesterday.
And I will actually third that, because I was on by a conference call, because I am the one who's granting these easements, now that I've become the property owner. And so we wanted to make very clear what we were all agreeing to and presenting today. Thank you.
So Mr. Holmes agreed yesterday afternoon to this?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Pennell?
We have two attorneys that represent both parties, correct? And everybody is, is in agreement. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Kendrick, you said that the only thing we need to do is clarify the words versus sale and easement and vacation and all that?
I can make a suggestion as to how it can be changed. In the second paragraph, the second whereas, we could say...